You're.
We good? All right. It's the mission of Big Walnut Local Schools to inspire and guide each student to his or her maximum potential. I'd like to call this meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
If you would be so kind, Jeremy.
Mr. Crowell.
Here.
Mrs. Dorsh.
Here.
Mr. Fuji.
Here.
Mrs. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
And just for the record, those who are around, Mrs. Lee is joining us by phone.
Thank you, Jeremy. That brings us to item six in the superintendent's report, which looks a little thin agenda-wise.
It is because everything we need to talk about, we actually have motions for, so I'll save it for then.
All right, sounds good. Jeremy, touching base on the treasurer's sides of things, anything you wanted to touch base or give a quick update on?
I actually do not. I'll save everything for next week when we go over the financial report.
Okay. Sounds good. That brings us to item eight and selected board policies. And this is the first reading for two policies, although we have one of them on our agenda for this morning. I almost said tonight. That's what kind of week it's been. First one is thirty-two twenty, standard-based teaching evaluation, which is replacing the current policy. And then twenty-two sixty-six, nondiscrimination on the basis of sex and education programs or activities, which is a new one driven by some federal action, I think. But Mark, I think you're here to tell us more about that.
Yeah. So I'll speak to thirty-two twenty because that's a first reading and then that'll be on again for next week. That is for OTES two point oh. The state did delay the implementation requirement for this year to next year. However, they did not delay, they did not delay the requirement for the board to approve OTES two point oh by September first of this year. We kind of expected that. We expected them to delay it, but they did not do that. So we are going to recommend that this be approved. It's not really a choice, but we will do a second reading next week. We do have our evaluation committee meeting at eleven o'clock today to review these changes. It's nothing new. Again, we've talked about it for a couple of years now. But we will have the evaluation committee review those items as well with two point oh. Interestingly enough, the state really hasn't spelled out the two point oh rubric formally to us yet. It is there. It is on their website. They kind of delayed implementation due to all of the pandemic response and items going on. But they certainly have not communicated too much to us yet. Everything is on their website. I've been able to look at everything. We'll review it with the evaluation committee. Our choices are essentially adopt two point oh for next year or adopt our own rubric that has to align to two point oh and be approved by the state. So there aren't really choices with it. But at the end of the day, it will be reviewed by our valuation committee today. And they will recommend any changes. I'll provide to you. I don't anticipate any. But if there are any potential changes before that second reading, I will bring that to you prior to next week.
We've already had those discussions with them previously. This is just kind of the final policy language.
Correct, correct. And then under twenty-two sixty-six, this is a requirement of federal law, quite the controversial one. As you might recall, back in May, Title IX regulations were overhauled, is probably the best term to use there, by our federal government. There's a lot of controversy around it. Actually, there were two federal lawsuits over it that just yesterday ruled in favor of the federal government's changes to these policies or in favor of essentially keeping it the way that it was announced. This has thrown a lot of educational organizations into turmoil because it is a huge overhaul of Title IX regulations. There are a lot of definitions that have changed from what case law provided before. You know, those definitions essentially were, the case law was showing what those definitions were. That's how people went back to say, okay, what is this? What is that? Now they're just spelling it out. This federal government has chosen to spell that out. And it's different from the definitions that have been provided in case law from before. Along with that, these Title IX regulations, the timing of all of this has been a huge issue. Colleges and universities, actually, the American Council of Education has said that they don't anticipate any college really being able to uphold these regulations for an entire year because of all the changes to them. The funding, there's none. They do require coordinators, which we've had continual with within our policy currently. But these now require investigators. These now require decision-makers that are different from the coordinators. So there are a lot of changes that we essentially have to go through. The federal government has not given us any leeway as far as timing. They said August fourteenth is the day that you have to approve a policy. We just received three weeks ago what these policy changes were. And so some have still not adopted and I don't anticipate anybody, not anybody, but I don't anticipate many people being able to adopt everything by August fourteenth. But we are bringing that to you because we don't have a choice. It is required law. So we are bringing this to you as a first reading and because it's a legal requirement, requesting a recommendation for approval today. So with the, with these Title IX regulations, again, there are a lot of details about nondiscrimination on the basis of sex and education. There are a lot of definitions in there, as you've seen. But at the end of the day, it really comes down to when there is an accusation in violation of Title IX. It's the investigation process. It is the coordinator's role to review everything. It is a decision-maker's role to make a final decision on things. There is an appeal process. There are a lot of pieces that are involved in it. So not overly excited about the requirements that come with this, but at the end of the day, it is law that certainly we will continue to uphold. And it does replace a fifty-five seventeen oh two, which we don't have in place because we have a fifty-five seventeen. But the law does not address fifty-five seventeen. They do anticipate that we will have to revise fifty-five seventeen. Fifty-five seventeen is really our nondiscrimination clause. This is now a new policy, twenty-two sixty-six. So there are a lot of complex, complex issues with this. But essentially, we do expect to have more continuing to happen. As I said, the lawsuits ruled just yesterday. Actually, just last night I found out about that. And so from that, we do anticipate fifty-five seventeen changing because it is contradictory to what this twenty-two sixty-six is going to say. But again, I think, you know, this is the time right now, not the best time for such a policy to be thrown to us with everything else going on right now. But this is essentially what we're being told. We have to, we have to approve this and then we can go back and make changes later, essentially.
Just to add to that, Mark was on the phone with our attorney for another reason and even clarified we're supposed to approve this even though, is it fifty-five seventeen? It doesn't match. And he's like, yeah, that's where we are. Just so you're aware, we know that they don't match. We were still given legal counsel to go ahead and approve this one. And then the other one will be coming from Neola to match.
So as part of the, beyond the lack of alignment between the two, I mean, as part of your concern, just the ability to staff all of those positions with people that are appropriately trained to be an investigator, things of that nature?
Each of our administrators has already or will be going through the level one training, which is a one-hour briefing. Every staff member will go through that level one training as well. That is not required by the law, but they do, within this law, have a requirement of a school district having knowledge of of an accusation or of an incident. Having knowledge of is a very key phrase because the simple verbal report from a parent to a teacher of the possibility of something becomes knowledge of. And so we do have a required training that staff will have. It's a shorter training than the one-hour in-depth presentation we went into. But essentially defines what that means and that we are to take that seriously. And any knowledge of is an immediate report to the building principal. There are level two trainings. So on top of that, there are five level two trainings. Laura, Lawrence and I are the coordinators for the district. I have one of those actually tomorrow. It's two and a half hour training just for the first one. Each of those five is about two to two and a half hours apiece. Laura has gone through three or four of those. I had some meetings over the summertime to not be able to get into some of those. So this is where most districts are right now. Many have not gotten to the level two trainings yet, just as I haven't because of everything else going on. But we are required to have all those level two trainings as coordinators completed for the beginning of the school year.
The conversation with our legal counsel, was that only pertaining to getting it passed by the date? Or has our legal counsel reviewed the entire policy?
Yeah, the whole policy, actually, the options that you'll see in there and everything are selected based off of what we are currently doing as much as possible and what we'll have to change to adjust to in our district. Neola has the legal representation to look at and recommend those changes. So between Neola and OSBA, whatever, you know, districts have those two companies, essentially organizations that refer and interpret the policy, the language of the legal law there and then recommend the language to us. We have a few options, as you can see in there, of what those, what we can select essentially for our district. There's not a lot of choice, but there are a few things in there that we selected. As far as the adoption, back to your question, it is more of a like, hey, you have to, you have to have this approved. So we did not go through a full twenty, it's a twenty-page document. We did not send this to legal to look at every last detail of it. But all the details in here are legal requirements and/or legal options. So anything selected in here is going to be legal.
Well.
With the law.
My question is, it starts out by titling this as a nondiscrimination based on sex, which is covered in the first paragraph of the policy.
Right.
The remainder nineteen and a half pages is sexual harassment.
Right.
And we already have policy twenty-two sixty, which covers any form of harassment.
Correct.
So are we duplicating here?
In a way, yes. But that's what this, that's what the law requires. It's a federal law that was passed by and really essentially outlined by our Department of Education Director, Betsy DeVos. This was essentially what she put out and has held up. So we have to approve everything that's in this. It does duplicate some things. Back to what I explained earlier on fifty-five seventeen, there will have to be revisions of fifty-five seventeen or deletion of fifty-five seventeen because of this. Same with, with any other policy that we have right now. There will be duplicative and contradictory measures right now. Neola and OSBA essentially have had to look at this and say, okay, right now, the requirement is a new policy. So we'll do that first and then we'll have to go back and look at all the other things. The problem is the timing. It goes back to the fact that this was dropped in May and said, but you have to have this done within the next two months and figure it out. So again, we got this three weeks ago. We haven't even seen anything related to the other policies that contradict what this one says.
Can I add, Mr. Crowell, there's further requirements for discrimination based on sex as compared to other forms of discrimination that are in the other policy. So there's things we have to do related differently, just if it's related to sex.
Right. Protected classes, you know, sex is one of the protected classes, but then there are others as far as the way that the laws are.
Well, the other portion of it that I have an issue, a grave issue with, is their description of harassment. And C says sexual assault. And that's two different classes of events, one's civil and one's criminal.
You have just as much issue as everybody else does with this.
I can tell you're having problems.
I'm hearing you on this exactly.
Right.
Our federal government and this administration, their interpretation of what this is, is what has been put into this policy here. I fully agree with where you're at on things. I think there's a lot of contradictory definitions in here and a lot of things that just don't fully make sense. And it's essentially being shoved down our throats on what we have to do as a district. Colleges and universities are feeling the same way. And a lot of districts are feeling the same way with this.
Well, I have to ask, what's the penalty if we don't pass it today?
The ultimate penalty would be losing federal funding. So if we're not following federal laws and requirements, then we would lose all of our federal funding potentially up to our full amount. You know, I think there's a difference probably between if we don't have this implemented by, or approved by August fourteenth, which is tomorrow, and the difference of are we abiding by the requirements? And then do we have this approved in a more, at least in a more timely manner? Are we just saying we're not paying attention to that? I think it depends on, you know, again, most districts are in this place, so I don't anticipate there being a bunch of OCR investigations. Then again, who knows where they pick to go after at that point?
What's the timeline look like? I mean, obviously, there's a lot of clarification and things that are, that are coming up. Do you have a sense of when some of that stuff might be coming down from either legal counsel or further input from the federal government or anything related to that?
As far as the other policies and interpretation or making adjustments to this.
Yeah.
My understanding is part of the federal lawsuits that were placed were because of some of that language and some of the requirements of this. Those, again, were lost as of yesterday. The federal courts struck those lawsuits down or dismissed those lawsuits. And so, you know, I don't, I don't anticipate any changes as of right now to this. I think there will be more challenges to it, but I mean, those could drag out for months or even the entire year or years for that matter. I don't have any other ideas to when the other revisions might come on the other policies right now. Again, I think everyone's focused on a pandemic and this was, the ACE or the American Council of Education did plead with the federal government to please delay these regulations. They didn't want to hear that.
So basically, I mean, if we were to delay, to Doug's point, really nothing's going to change with this policy. And we're either going to ignore it or we're going to adopt it. And we're either going to comply with federal law or not. It's kind of what I'm hearing.
Correct.
Well, Doug's major point is we already are.
Well, I mean, I guess in terms of the federal law of that particular policy being approved, not that we're not. I understand what you're saying.
Right.
Yep. I have a lot of frustration with all this. I know Laura does as well and just how quickly things have been thrown at us and required to be adopted. So I have a lot of questions about it as well, but at the end of the day, we have to, we're required to adopt it. I don't see it really changing as of right now. Now, legal, I anticipate more lawsuits coming and we'll see what happens.
And who's driving this? What department of the federal government?
This is Department of Education.
Could I see that directive at some point?
Yeah. Yeah, I can actually send you a few articles on it too from the government as well as a few pretty well-written articles about it.
Did you send them the one that our law attorney was, that was a good one? You sent it to the administrators?
Yeah, I can definitely forward that one too if I hadn't sent that to the board already. I don't think I have. Yeah, there are several. There are a lot of articles that have been written in the last two months just on this, this issue. But I'll certainly send those over to you guys tonight.
Mr. President, I am not that fearful of the federal government. And the timeline of tomorrow, when the board only received this Friday, and I understand that's not on you.
Sure.
I would move to table it until next week's meeting.
Okay. Well, we haven't had the resolution yet, but I mean, I guess.
Yeah, let me know when to say that.
We can do that here in a second.
But.
I didn't want to miss my opportunity.
No, you're, you're all good. Early bird gets the worm, right?
Steve, Sheri, Leanna, do you guys have any questions or? Well, Mark's here to speak to it. All right. Thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
Then that brings us to item eight one.
Brad, this is me. Brad, this is Leanna. I was having trouble hearing most of the discussion. So depending where we're going on the vote on this, I'm not sure that I'm prepared to vote on it.
Okay.
Which is a bad connection on my end.
Okay. Well, I was getting ready to read the resolution and something tells me there might be a motion to table when I do that. So hang tight. It's recommended the board adopt the following new policy, twenty-two sixty-six, nondiscrimination on the basis of sex and the education programs or activities. Kind of a motion, please. Thank you, Sheri. Is there a second?
Does no second mean that it goes to table?
Oh, in essence, we're not going to take any action on it, which would be, in effect, the tabling, I believe.
I think we could also vote to table.
I can make my motion.
You can make your motion.
I don't think that.
I made the motion that we table until next week's meeting.
All right, there is a motion to table item eight one and bring it back for adoption at the eight-twenty meeting or at least consideration for adoption, I should say, at the eight-twenty meeting. That's the motion. Is there a second to table?
Second.
I hear a second from Steve. So Mark, if we did table, we basically would be out of compliance hypothetically for a week if we ended up did approving it the following week. And all of our current policies that exist that seem to capably cover this topic would still be in force, correct?
As of right now, correct.
Okay.
Now, the way that we handle an investigation, granted, we're not in school yet, so that helps. But we don't have a ton of these types of investigations in Big Walnut on an annual basis. We give a few typically per year that Laura and I go through. So this would not be a huge impact to us.
Okay.
Jeremy, are we due to get any funds in the next seven days from the federal government?
We, we are. We just put, put in a request for some reimbursement of funds, so.
Okay. So there's a motion to table. Do you want to call the vote on the table?
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
No.
Mrs. Lee?
I'm staying.
Mr. Schneider?
I was going to vote no. Which would leave us.
Back to.
Back to having on the, on the agenda, right?
That's correct.
All right. So we'll go ahead and call the vote then for eight one. Recommending the board adopt the new policy. Oh wait, we don't have a second yet, do we? That's right. So let me reread it. Eight one's recommended the board adopt the following new policy. Twenty-two sixty-six, nondiscrimination on the basis of sex and the education programs or activities. Could I have a motion?
Summon.
Is there a second? I'll second.
Okay. Mr., Mr. or Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
No.
Ms. Lee?
I'm staying.
All right. Stretched out our Roberts Rules of Order work there. All right. And then you'll bring us back and we'll talk twenty-two sixty, or I'm sorry, thirty-two twenty, teacher evaluation next week. All right, thank you. If anybody has any questions on teacher evaluation policy in the meanwhile, Mark is your man. Item nine, board member items of interest. And Leanna, we'll start with you.
I don't have anything this morning, Brad.
All right, thank you. Sheri?
Uh, no, I don't have anything.
Doug?
I would like to compliment the graduates of the class of twenty-twenty on reaffirming my belief that they could, they could have their graduation and follow the rules that were in place and the rest of the participants that came.
Thank you. Steve, anything for you?
No. I think everything will be answered in the resolutions coming in.
Sounds good. I would just like to echo Doug's statement. I thought our graduation ceremony, though not surprising to me, was an excellent example of what this community can do and will do when we need to come together to make something happen. And I know there are folks there that maybe were, were doing some things to comply with requirements that they didn't necessarily personally believe in. But they were doing those things because they thought it was the right thing for the kids and the right things for this community. And that spirit, it just always makes me feel proud to be part of this community. And I think it's a spirit that's going to serve us very well as we begin to open our schools and get back to as normal of a school year as possible coming up here in the near future. So, so thank you for that. Item ten is public participation. It's a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school's business. It is not considered a public community meeting. It's a time for public participation during the meeting. It's indicated in the agenda. Please reference the criteria for public participation, which is attached to the agenda. And we are still accepting prior submissions via email as well. And of course, if you're here, I don't, I guess I don't have to read that part because you're not necessarily here. So anyhow, I don't see anybody in attendance. Mark, I think, is making a double check. So we have nobody here in person for a public comment. Did we receive any public comment and email to be read into the record?
I did not.
Okay.
Neither did I.
All right. Then moving on to business items then. Item eleven one, it's recommended the board approve to amend the Gilbain Company Agreement to establish a guaranteed maximum price for the Big Walnut Athletic Package known as GMP five. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sheri.
Good morning. So again, there was a reading of this last time from information at the last board meeting. This is GMP five. It's the final amendment to Gilbain's contract. So this will make them whole or we'll have everything under contract for the project. This is the site athletic. So again, baseball, softball, football field, track, accretments, et cetera, just as was discussed last time. The contract amounts a little bit more than eight point eight million dollars for this GMP. It brings Gilbain to a little over ninety-three million, just to share. Dates, we would start construction ideally in September if awarded today and be completed early summer of twenty-one. Using the football stadium if we wanted and the fall twenty-one and the, and the other athletics where there's natural grass the following spring and summer, just to share. So again, this is GMP five, site athletics package.
And also includes the furniture for the high school.
It does include an allowance for the high school furniture. Again, that's a set budget of one point five million dollars. The thought was it saves a little bit of accounting, if you will, in terms of both us and Gilbain in doing that. The design is in its final stages. Again, with the mandate, we cannot and will not go over budget. But we're doing some final tweaks to that and we'll come back to the board just for information so you can see what that looks like. Should you have any questions on the furniture in the future? Any questions? Okay.
There's no other question or discussion? Jeremy?
I do have one.
I'm sorry, Doug, go ahead.
So I, if I am to understand, the money for the furnishings is also in this?
Yes.
It is. We've done similar things with like landscaping and other things in the past where we put allowances in their contract. Because ultimately, the furniture would be through Gilbain's contract. It's just we did the elementary, although that was a separate GMP for that elementary furniture package. So the thought was just to wrap it up and put it in one time. It saves them a little bit of cost, us a little bit of administrative cost. You don't have to know what that? That varies, one point five million. For the furnishing? Yes, that's what the allowance value is. Okay. That's part of the eight point eight million. Anything else?
I think we're good, Jeremy.
Okay. Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Item eleven two, it's recommended the board approve the remote learning plan referenced in House Bill one sixty-four. Could I have a motion, please?
Summon.
Thank you, Sheri. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. And I believe Jen's here to talk a little more about that.
I am. Hopefully, you were able to open up the remote learning plan that we have to share with the state with ODE. So that plan, as you can see, is not super detailed. That's just what was required by the state. They are not approving it. They're just simply holding it, posting it, that type of thing. The reason it's a little bit generic is because it has to cover both our, if we go into crisis remote learning, as well as our virtual learning program. I'm not, which I mentioned to you, I'm not going to talk a ton about our crisis remote learning plan today. Mainly because I don't want to confuse, there's been some confusion about that versus the kids who are choosing to go remote. And I don't want to confuse our families this close to the school year because I feel like we've just got the communication going in the right direction. And they know what that VLP is going to look like for their kids. So I'm going to pause on talking about if we shut down crisis remote learning until we at least get the school year started, so there's no confusion. So with that, talking a little bit about the virtual learning program, hopefully you were able to hop on our website. You can find a link to the VLP under. I am super proud of the work that has been done by an incredibly small team, um, in comparison to other districts over the last four weeks. I mean, essentially, we created a school in four weeks for over seven hundred children, so that's something that normally we would plan for a year, a year, two years. Um, so it's been, it's been fast and furious. Um, a couple of things that I'm very proud of, of this program, is some things that our community has requested, that when I meet with my colleagues around central Ohio, I don't know anyone else that is doing some of the things we're doing for our virtual students. Some examples of that is we heard loud and clear that our families want Big Walnut teachers. They didn't want just a computer program. They wanted to interact with a teacher. Um, that is a scheduling nightmare, but after literally weeks of scheduling and whiteboarding and spreadsheets, we were able to make that happen. So all of our core courses in our VLP are being taught by our Big Walnut teachers. They're using Edmentum as a resource to pull from, um, but teach, kids will know their teachers. The teacher will be with them on Google Meet, presenting to them, um, asking questions, pulling small groups, that type of thing. The, the only courses that are not, which we're calling Big Walnut Supported Courses, are electives, um, and that's basically just because of staffing. You may have one kid that chooses a specific art elective, um, just FTE wise, doesn't make sense to pull a teacher for that. Um, so those electives are taught solely through Edmentum. However, they are supported by a Big Walnut teacher. So those students will hear from a Big Walnut teacher once a week, just checking in, how's it going? You seem to be falling behind or ahead or what have you, just kind of keeping track of them. Um, the other pieces, we are offering honors courses through our VLP, and I don't know any other district that is doing that because it's very difficult to make happen. Huge shout out to Kelly Blumer and our counseling department, Andy Jados. I mean, hours and days and weeks of pulling two hundred plus kids' schedules and identifying there's two kids in this class. How can I move this schedule to make it happen? Um, because those teachers at our middle, sorry, six through, fifth through twelve are teaching in person as well. So they may have three periods of in-person class and then periods four, five, and six, they, um, will be teaching our VLP students. So in the schedule, it looks as if those VLP kids are in the building. They're going through just like any other student, but they just happen to be at home. Um, so yes, scheduling nightmare, but it, it, we were able to make it happen. Um, the other piece is we have allowed, um, students to come in for a course, for example, and student wants to come in and take that, they are welcome to do that, where I know in, um, other districts, it's you choose one or the other. So having that flexibility with families. Um, the other piece that I've heard and, and I'm sure others, I know what, we're, we're the ones fielding all of these calls and emails, and I've had probably close to a hundred between calls and emails, and those are the two things we heard loud and clear was Big Walnut teachers and are they gonna still feel connected to the building? That's the big, they wanna be a General Rosecrans Elementary student. They wanna be a BWI student. Um, so we are providing the social emotional piece that we offer at our K eight. We are offering that in our VLP, so they will meet once a week with their teacher, with their whole class, and doing the morning meeting and doing that advisory and the character strong piece, um, so that they're also, um, getting that social piece as well, even though they happen to be at home. And then the other piece is, and this is just talking to people all over, um, central Ohio, we're, obviously, we've been talking about personalization for years, and we don't want that to go away in the VLP, even though it's a little more difficult because they're at home, and that's why I think most districts are just putting them on Apex or Edmentum a program and because it financially and logistically, it's much, much easier. Um, but we actually, on the twenty-fourth, when we have, that's our stagger start week, so the twenty-fourth, our, um, high school students have Eagles first flight. Our K through eight students, that is a VLP attendance day. So our VLP students come in and the families who are in our VLP have already received a personalized email. They know when their time is. They were assigned to an hour to come in and pick up their Chromebook, pick up any math manipulatives, books they may need, um, as well as take our screeners, so STAR, um, DIBBLES, so that we know where these kids are, so that the teachers can use that way to start to make small groups and plan their lessons according to their needs. So still doing that assessment piece with them to make sure that we're able to personalize.
And you are giving, um, an option if a family's not comfortable coming in the building, right?
Yep. And we, um, we were curious, would people be willing to come in? And I believe Jenna said we've had maybe five out of all seven hundreds of students that are not willing to come in, so that was kind of, that's across, um, K twelve. I, I, in talking to these parents, they want that connection. They wanna feel like their child is still a part of it, so excited that we're able to offer that. And I think the biggest thing with that is we added no staff to make that happen, no staff. The amount of money we've spent is sixty-five hundred dollars on Edmentum. So I think that's pretty incredible to essentially add a program for seven hundred people with adding zero staff. When I say added zero staff and extra money, but of course, hopefully you all know Jenna Crawford. Um, she has been a teacher and then an instructional coach in the district for five, six years, something like that, close, and she is going to be our VLP coordinator. Um, so she is now the one fielding all of those. I've been able to kind of shift some of the work, thankfully. Um, she's now the one fielding the dozens of parent calls and questions and, um, so she's getting ready to do a staff meeting with those VLP teachers and, um, kind of make them feel welcome, like they're a part of a school, so to speak, as well. Anything I missed?
Um, I think you have it all. I think our teachers that are, um, are doing the VLP are.
Jenna, sorry, can you come up and, and use the microphone, please, just since we're recording? Thank you. While she's coming up, I'll add, her spot wasn't an FTE add, it was just shifting people around within the VLP, so we were, um, much in need of somebody to oversee all this.
Um, no, what I'm saying is the teachers are so excited to jump in. Um, they've had lots and lots of conversations and they're really excited to give those kids our personal touch that we always thrive on here at Big Walnut and we're just really to get the ground running.
Questions?
So you hit one that I'd been thinking about, which is, at least in my time on the board, I've seen a lot of success with our STAR assessment process in the elementaries and really helping kids get off to a good start, so it sounds like we're doing that as, as sort of a, as a preset, and then I'm assuming we've got different milestone points throughout the year where, is that gonna be another chance where it's like, hey, we need you to come in for half an hour or something, and is that how that works, or?
Yep, we plan to have them in at the three. We benchmark, assess our kindergarten three, grade students, um, at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, December-ish, and then at the end of, end of the year, April, April-ish, and we plan to do that same thing. Parents can opt out if they want to do it virtually, um, but we are gonna have them in as well, just to make sure with this program, we want to make sure that the kids, obviously, that the kids are growing and they're getting, they're getting out of it with in-person kids are.
I think that's an important point. We've been asked a lot about with the shutdown of the buildings last year, concern about, you know, kids being behind, and that's our practice every year, is to assess the kids at the beginning of the year and now whether they're in the VLP or in person and make sure that our instruction is meeting them where they are. Obviously, um, more of a sense of urgency than usual, given the situation and knowing that kids have lost some time, um, but that's a practice that we already have well entrenched in those buildings to be able to, to assess the kids and meet them where they are instructionally. So we want to make sure we do that for these kids as well.
And with that assessment piece in the building, you may know about our RTI program, where students who do not assess at grade level get pulled into a small group and get what we call double dip, extra tutor support, not only a small group with their teacher, but also with a tutor. And we, we're not sure we were gonna be, how we were gonna make that happen in the VLP without any staff, but we were able to make that happen. So our kiddos learning at home that are not on level will get RTI services just like they, um, would if they were in the building.
And that's, we have a tutor that's assigned to the VLP who will be able to meet with them on Google Meet and do small groups. It's the primary means of that.
Okay.
So my question is, and clearly there's a lot to be proud of, congratulations on all the work that you've put into this and the fact that there's not an add or those types of things is remarkable. My question is relative to, I think there's a bullet point that's kind of consistent across each grade level, which is if the teacher must take leave during remote learning, there's a designated tutor or person who kind of steps up with that. How does that, i- is that just within that finite VLP group, or is that a tutor or teacher that's taking that responsibility on elsewhere?
So, oddly enough, we just talked about this yesterday, and some of this is gonna be the sub-issue.
Mm-hmm.
Is.
Gonna be an issue.
Go be an issue this year. Yeah, it is. And so we've talked about our VLP kids. We talked about if a, if a teacher's out for one day and they're a VLP teacher, they can probably get the videos ready, get the stuff ready and, and keep on rolling, and the kids may or may, may not, may or may not even need a tutor to step in. Now, if someone's gonna be out for a week, then we have that tutor, um, at the elementary level that Angie mentioned, that will be able to come in and hopefully take over those small groups and those plans. Now, if it's more than one teacher that happens to be out, then we're gonna have to regroup. We're gonna have to look at our tutors. We know that our tutors in the buildings, we've had tutors for years doing our RTI program, and we are not naive to the fact that they're, they're probably gonna be doing some subbing this year, a- and we hate that for the RTI program, but we just don't have the money to add, to add staff. And, and honestly, in a pinch, does it look like Jenna's helping out with some of those lessons and some of that work? It may. It's hard, it's hard to have a definitive because it's just a kind of matter of, oh, and is it, is it?
Food.
You know, is it twelve weeks? Well, then maybe we do get a sub to do the VLP. I guess it just depends on the length and we know we're gonna cross it for sure.
That, this is a good time for a PSA. I met with the PTO president yesterday, and the big thing I told them is if we want to keep school open, our biggest obstacle, in my opinion, is going to be having teachers and substitute teachers. So, really encouraging. We have a, a great group of, um, moms that, that work in our PTOs, many with college degrees who would be able to sub, so really encouraging that group to, um, go out and get their sub license and be, I said, even if you can only help a day a week, it's, it's a big help when we know we're, we already have a sub shortage going into the pandemic, and it's certainly going to be amplified. So, any of our parents out there, um, please see our website. There's, it's the first news article. If you would like to sub for us, it would be a huge help and would really help us keep our, our buildings open.
I have a question on continuity, but more on the technology side, so, um, an unnamed electric service provider in the area has had problems regularly with power outages at various intervals, and there's times when bandwidth gets hit and things of that nature, so can you just talk a little bit about kind of how the program's designed to adjust to those things, either when teachers are running into those situations or students?
Uh, well, the first thing is when we put out that survey to, um, parents to fill out that were selecting the VLP, they had to mark if they had internet struggles at their house, and so we have a list of those students that we're gonna be working with. Mr. Cooper plays a, a big hand in and out of getting those kids hotspots, and I've talked to several families that said, we do have internet, but exactly what you just said. And so we are addressing that with those families that marked that they have, they have some issues. So hopefully that takes care of a piece of it. I would also say that especially at the, you know, the younger levels that we, but also at our high school, we are not wanting all of this work to be done on a computer. Now, it may be pushed through a computer, through a document or through school, but the idea is that some of this work, and especially the younger grades, much of it, is stuff that they can do offline. And I, I think what, what may need to happen is that constant checking with those families, with those teachers and those ones who are having struggles, maybe we might need to pivot and make some other, make some other arrangements for those families, absolutely.
Do we have like physical locations in our buildings where teachers could come in and teach from? Okay.
We gave them that option, um, and I think most of them, well, at our fifth through twelve, they have to be in the building because they also have in-person courses. Our elementary, which is they're doing VLP all day, we gave the option, and I believe most of them are planning on being in the building, which I think says a lot about the culture of our buildings. I spoke to one of them yesterday that just said, oh, I just, I, I can't imagine not being a part of this, not being a part of my team still, um, not being a part of the building, and so I'm gonna set up my classroom with its own little recording corners, and she's coming in, so I'm still gonna plan with my team. I want to be a part of this still, so I think most of them are planning still to come in.
Okay. Thank you.
I think the big thing too, that we didn't have time to do before, when they talked about this material pickup, you know, you think about getting the kids math manipulatives, getting them books that they'll need, um, so that they'll have some of those materials to be able to do reading, to be able to journal, if they're not able to log on right at that minute.
Even in the spring, an example of our little ones, our elementaries do foundations, which is a phonics program, and in the spring, we can have that prep time, so they watched a video, is essentially what they did. Now, they'll be watching a video, interacting, and they'll have letter tiles at home, where they're moving the tiles, they're drawing, they'll have, so having those materials in their hands is gonna be super helpful.
And to speak to that note too, we're gonna, I'm going to be offering optional pickups monthly for families, students who, when the teachers say, oh, I want to get them this new novel, for example, in fifth grade, then they can have. Um, with me at where my office will be located.
Okay. Leanna, I know you can't really pick up the non-verbals on the phone, but did you have anything you wanted to, to ask or, or jump in on the conversation?
My only question, and I, I'm having a hard time hearing Jen and like Mark when they were speaking earlier, but how many students have at the high school who are pushing in for, or actually coming in for classes that are part of the VLP, that are actually coming in to get particular classes?
That's a good question, and I don't know the answer to it, but I can certainly get it for you and send it your way. I do know that, um, most of the families I talked to that were concerned about a one-off course, and as soon as I said that, like, oh, great, then they'll just come in for that, and they were happy as can be. A big one is banned, was a big one. They want their students to be able to come in for ban, which is at the beginning of the day, so that's helpful, but I will get you that number.
Thank you, Jen.
Yep.
Any other questions for Jen or Jenna?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So we do have eleven-two ready and queued up for a vote unless there's anything else?
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes. Item eleven-three, it's recommended board approve the restart plan for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year. Could I have a motion, please?
Summon.
Thank you, Sherry. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Leanna.
All right, thank you. Um, we've talked about this plan quite a bit, um, pretty much every meeting since, uh, summer started, I think. And, um, the, the specific reopening plan documents have been out. We did update them since the last meeting. Um, I know I sent the information out in an email, but just to remind everyone that the governor did now include grades K through two are required to wear masks, so our initial plans only had grades three through twelve, so we have updated those to include kindergarten and second grade as well, or kindergarten through second grade. And those were attached to your agenda there. They're also on our website, along with some FAQs, but wanted to highlight that that's the big change, is K two now in masks, and just wanted to share a few other points. Um, I did learn at my superintendent meeting that we had to have you formally approve these, so that's why this is on here today, as I shared with you previously in an email. Um, but we were able to sit down and I sent out some emailed questions that our staff members had and, and the answers to the entire district, so I know you got those, but just want to say I'm appreciative of our Big Walnut Education Association. Mark and Jen and Laura and I were able to meet with them and the leadership of the, of the association and kind of go through those, and they pointed out a couple areas like, hey, could you address this as well? So I feel like we were able to get to a point of, um, people feeling like their questions were answered between the FAQs that we've already put out, and then some of those, um, questions and answers that were a little bit more staff-specific, so feel good about those conversations and appreciate their help and, and looking that over. At this point now, the principals are meeting with their principals advisory committees at a building level and really starting to hone in on what that looks like in a building. So we're able to answer at a district level a certain logistic about a mask protocol or a cleaning protocol, but to be able to talk exactly about, you know, how traffic flow works in a hallway in a specific building, that's really what our administrative teams at each building are working on, and they're working with their PACs. So it was nice to hear from a couple of the, the teachers that we met with, the leadership, who had already been in their building PAC meetings and had the opportunity to have some of those conversations and just really feeling, um, more reassured by how we were looking at all those things. So again, as those details continue to work out, that'll be shared at a building level by principals with families. Um, I've been asked, a couple other things I wanted to highlight, I've been asked, um, at what point would we decide to go into remote, and if you've been following the news, um, it's been pretty interesting around central Ohio with a lot of flip-flopping and colors changing and, um, guidance from the health department changing in different counties, and so, you know, we've said from the beginning that we didn't want to tie our plan to the county's color. and colors changing and guidance from the health department changing in different counties. And so, you know, we've said from the beginning that we didn't want to tie our plan to the county's color. And actually, the Franklin County Health Director said in a meeting I was in a couple of weeks ago that, you know, probably not great to look at a color because it does, it does change. It could change weekly and 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 it's just not realistic to continue to move. So we decided we would continue to watch our numbers at a county level, but also within our district, which are are actually headed in the right direction, which is a good thing. But I talk with, we have a superintendent meeting weekly with our health commissioner and are constantly looking at those numbers and discussing. So if we start to see a concern in our district with the the COVID numbers, that would be something that I obviously would bring to the board for a discussion to decide if we thought it was appropriate or if the health commissioner was recommending at that point that we close down. She is not. She has been very supportive of the American Academy of Pediatrics and CDC's recommendations about getting kids back in person if possible and obviously doing that safely. So appreciate the collaboration with her and the other county superintendents. But for now, we feel that we have a plan that has met the needs of people that want to be at home and the needs of people that want to be in person and that we've been able to accommodate the safety protocols. Another new development, I guess, since we started talking about this, is they're now looking at if you have two barriers in a situation and somebody's not considered a contact. And so when you think about the six feet apart and how that's very difficult to do in person in a school building, what we learned is if if Steve and I right now, I think we're about probably six feet or so apart. So we actually have three barriers right now. You have a mask, I have a mask, and the six feet serves as a third barrier. So if we were actually three feet apart, but both had our masks on, that would be considered two barriers. If I took my mask off, he had his on, we're six feet apart, that's still two barriers. So as we look at contact tracing, which our school nurses will work with the health department to do, but they're actually, the Delaware General Health District will actually be the ones deciding who the contacts are. So if somebody in the classroom gets sick, they will be working with our nurse to decide who that student was actually around enough to be considered a contact because it has to be less than two barriers for 15 minutes or more. And so in a lot of our classroom situations, that would not, the kids in the classroom would not qualify or the teacher may not qualify as a contact. But that'll be something we'll work with the health department on. And we would let families know if there's a a case, but it would be the health department that would reach out. If if you were a contact, if I got sick and you were my contact, then the health department would actually be reaching out and and letting that family know. So I know there's a lot of anxiety around that. As this, as they've learned more and things have evolved and this came out now about the the barriers and how they feel the masks are being effective as two barriers, it makes me feel, you know, even better about being back in person. And because one of our anxieties was just the contact tracing. And, you know, a lot of concern if someone's sick is an entire class shut down. And in talking with the health department, that's not the intention. But again, it depends on if people aren't following protocols and and there aren't two barriers, then then yes, we may have more contacts in that room. So that'll be something that our district nurse, Megan Truax, has a a draft put together of protocols for that that she's been working on with the health department that will go out to families soon. We're just kind of finalizing that. So that's something we want to get out to parents within the next couple of days. So hopefully that'll help answer some of the the concerns that that people have with contact tracing. So those were just a few things. More on the the health side that I wanted to highlight. I feel like Jen and Jenna obviously addressed the VLP part of it. Obviously, instructionally, we are going to continue to work with our staff to make sure that we're meeting our educational vision to personalize, engage, grow. And that we're, we don't want to just revert to a teacher stance if they're in lectures the whole period. So that's not the intention of bringing kids back into school. And so we're going, we're continuing to work with our our team so that they can work with their staffs on that. I'll take any questions that you have on the reopening plan or anything that I just shared today.
So in regard to the.
And gee.
Go ahead, Leanna.
Oh, sorry. I appreciate that Megan was working on that document in watching the governor's press conference the other day. And one of the doctors was talking about kind of the same thing you're talking about, the different barriers, the masks, through the six-foot social distancing. They provided some examples of, okay, at this point, is this person a contact or is this person a contact? And I think that that will be really helpful for families that've seen, you know, some chatter on social media about that and providing that kind of information of how we're going to handle or actually that we're not going to handle, you know, those notifications and things like that, that those responsibilities fall to the health department.
Yes, and I, we've been sent, the CDC has some of those scenarios. And then I think that one was maybe Cincinnati children's. I've seen one out of Dayton as well. So that's definitely something that we can pull in with that FAQ and share.
Tied to that as well, I'm assuming that means that pretty much in in every in-person situation inside classrooms, there's going to be some sort of assigned seating as far as where kids are.
We've had a lot of dialogue about that. At the secondary level, yes, we're recommending that when they're in with different cohorts. At the elementary level, where you're with that one group of kids all day, because we started at a point of, you know, recommending, and I've talked with the health department about this extensively because there are two schools of thought. One is if you're sending them to school, you want them to socialize and interact so that at an elementary class, that's your cohort. You know, obviously, we'll try to distance as much as possible and they'll have masks on. We have hand sanitizer and in many elementary classes, hand washing sinks and stations. But the idea being, you know, quite frankly, if I'm going to send Carson, my third grader, to school and he has to talk to the same two kids all day and sit with them at lunch, I might keep him home, you know, because part of why I want him to go to school is the socialization and to be able to interact with other kids. And so at that point, so we've we've had a lot of talk even with our team and, you know, obviously, many of us are parents. And so to an extent, yes, we don't want them moving around all day, but we also don't want it to be an experience where, hey, for for two months, I can literally only sit by Brad and Steve. I mean, that, especially if I don't like them, that might get old, right? So making sure that kids.
Nobody would want that.
Making sure that kids can interact and and have some sense of social. Obviously, for a day, we don't want them moving, like our typical, we have flexible seating where they're moving around all day. So not wanting it to be where they're moving around all day, but maybe that's your seat for the day. And then when we clean, maybe you have a different, you can have a different seat the next day.
Well, and I think, you know, time plays a factor in all of it too, because as far as the contact tracing, if you've been next to somebody for, you know, three hours, that is more of a, you know, contact than somebody that you were standing next to for 10 minutes or something.
And again, our understanding is that even if we're sitting by each other three hours, if there are at least two barriers, they would not be considered a contact. We are trying to limit cohorts so there's not tons and tons of mixing all over the place. The middle school, they've kind of gone back in a teaming model, so it's the same groups of kids, but they'll be in different periods. So I wouldn't necessarily be by the same kid every period. So in those classes, we're saying, you know, let's let's try to limit movement because they're already moving to different classes. But in a in a class with little kids where it's one group of kids that are together all day, you know, a lot of being a seven-year-old is is learning how to have communication and and talk with people. So we want to make sure that they get a an opportunity to interact with a variety of kids.
My wondering continues to be around the exact same question I asked, reference VLP. I know timing will be an issue and I know subs will be an issue as well. And there will be illnesses that are non-COVID related. So if a teacher is out and there isn't a sub, would the thought be like, I know sometimes in elementary classrooms, it's split the classroom amongst the other third grade teachers or something like that?
Our hope is that would be a last resort because we don't want to add more kids into a classroom. So we do have, and and Mark, feel free to, if you have anything to add here, but I know we're building subs. So sometimes we've shared ones, but looking to have a a set building sub, knowing we're going to need them every day. So it's it's consistency for them, but it doesn't cost us anymore from subbing. So there would be a set person there. And then obviously, the tutors, like Jen talked about, if we need to, maybe pulling people during their plan periods that they have to do a per-plan cover and it's kind of piecemeal together. Those are all the things we would do if we weren't able to get a sub. Obviously, our first goal is to is to have a sub. And I think, you know, as I talk with colleagues in other districts, everybody's in that boat right now, unfortunately.
Which probably only exacerbates the sub situation.
And then you have some subs, a lot of our subs, you know, are retired teachers who are older and it would be in that high-risk category and they may not be comfortable. Right? So I think that might cut into our pool some too. But that's why, again, any, if we can get anybody in the district that can help us with that, we we really do need some good subs to be in and help out to keep the the doors open.
So I guess then would the consideration be if the, it's not necessarily contact. And again, this, it's not necessarily a contact tracing issue, it's not necessarily a COVID-related issue. It it just could even be the potential of manpower.
Yes.
On the adult side.
Yep.
Would the request be that, or would the thinking be, again, as a last resort, that we're going to say, hey, stay home for two days, third-grade classroom at whatever school?
We we could get to a point where it's a classroom or a building or a district where we need to stay down, just depending on attendance numbers, yeah. And definitely with staff, if we don't have people to to adequately supervise. It's not our desire to do what you described, and we've done that in the past when we've had shortages in a normal situation. But, you know, we're trying to keep kids spread out. We're trying to limit cohort mixing. And so we don't want to just keep dividing a class and suddenly you you've now increased 50% in your number. Yeah, it's definitely going to be a challenge. I think we all know that going in, it's, Jen joked about Jenna jumping in and and running groups. You know, we don't have instructional coaches at the elementaries right now. So that's been a person in the past that we've been able to, in a pinch, have go in and cover a class. So, you know, we're just all going to have to pitch in and do what we can to to keep the kids in classrooms. I don't have a magical answer other than, again, if you know people who are, you know, stay-at-home moms that have college degrees, for example, or dads that would be interested in helping us out, that information's on our website. We love having our parents as subs. They're some of our best subs, you know, know the community, know the kids. So we would really welcome that. Any other questions I can answer?
Not so much. I mean, I guess it is related to school reopening, but I know there's been a lot going on on the extracurricular front. Do you have anything you would just kind of, I know that much of that's kind of out of our hands in terms of what's allowed and whatnot, but maybe just a quick update of where that's at for everybody?
And that's just a constantly moving target between, you've got the governor's office, who has yet to give us, continues to say they're going to give some information soon. We've not received that. From everything he has said and Lieutenant Governor Houston has said in press conferences, they're definitely making the case to have high school athletics, I feel, just the the vibe of those comments. But we haven't gotten anything right now for contact sports. There's still a restriction that they can't compete with other, excuse me, other schools until we have the capacity to test the entire program and then continue to do so every 72 hours. And no one does. No one has that capacity at a at a high school level. So what we were told, and it was even said in one of the last press conferences, without, that was never intended for high school. It was for the professional sports in the state or the Nike basketball tournaments and these other events. And supposedly, that's going to get changed, but until it does, we can't have any contact sports compete. They are able to practice. So our athletes right now, in this, as you look at fall season, because obviously that's where we are and those are the kids we're we're working with right now, we would be looking at soccer and football as contact sports. Cross-country, Atlanta, you may know this, they get reclassified as non-contact, I think. That was a big one for a while. They had it as contact. I know we were talking about it and I couldn't remember where it landed. Volleyball.
My understanding is non-contact, yeah.
Volleyball, so they're able to compete. Golf is non-contact. Non- or low-contact is able to compete. I know our volleyball teams had a scrimmage, but we're not allowed to have fans because they're using the whole gym. It was a way, although I guess freshmen were home, but that was hard for me. My daughter's senior year, I couldn't go out to scrimmage, but we're hoping to be able to have spectators at games. Right now, what we're hearing from the OCC then now talking about our league versus the state is they're wanting to do a 20% spectator. You know, we're we're saying we want to do as many as we can fit in there and socially distance, which if you think of the graduation, that was more around 32%. So if we can, we have a smaller stadium, so we want to maximize as long as we can socially distance and get as many people in there as possible. But right now, that's all up in the air and I know it's frustrating for people, but we don't know exactly what's going to happen. We do know that some of the contact sports, they're talking about moving to week three, playing a six-week season, and then everybody makes the playoffs. Instead of being the computer point system, it would be like every other sport does where you just get a seed. And then if you choose to go in the tournament, you can. If you don't want to, you can pick up your other three games, just regular games. So those are all things that are kind of in flux right now. But they're, when I say, I'm sorry, we start with week three and week one now. So they're not actually moving back the first game. They're moving week three up to week one, dropping weeks one through three, which are typically your non-league. So a lot of that is just really, really up in the air right now. But golf and tennis have already playing. They've already gotten off to a start. Obviously, they're outside, so it's a little bit easier in terms of of spectators on golf and tennis. But volleyball with being in the gym, we don't know exactly what that's going to look like. I know we are putting some of the high school games over at the middle school. Even though we like our hot court as home court advantage, there's some concern of spectators and masks with the heat. The girls are kind of, you know, younger and used to playing, you know, but if you get older people in there that are wearing a mask in that heat, there's some concern. So moving it over to the middle school with air. Huh, anything else that you can think of I miss? I know there's a lot there.
I know there's a lot in flux, but I also know we've got a lot of folks that are listening and following along that always get to hear different reports. And I think we see sometimes maybe the media doesn't quite get it 100% correct sometimes when they're talking about some of these things.
Yeah, and I I would like to thank, first of all, Brian Shelton and Joe Rucker, athletic directors. They've been doing a great job just staying up with all this and communicating. And if we get any reports of, hey, you know, somebody's not following a mask protocol or anything like that, they've been great about just looking into it, reminding people, hey, where can we, you know, let's assess how we're doing. What can we improve? Appreciate our coaches. And again, we, has everything been perfect? No, but I think that if we see something that's not exactly following a protocol, we've addressed it. People are very receptive to that. The kids have been, for the most part, great about listening and doing what they needed and that they need to to follow those protocols to be able to play and that's important to them. So appreciate our kids and and families and kind of like you mentioned with graduation. I know not everybody agrees with all of them, but I think everybody understands that that's what needs to happen for us to be able to to participate. So appreciate everybody's efforts there because I know it's been a lot of extra work for athletes, parents, coaches, or athletic directors. One thing we will be talking about soon, and Jeremy, Mark and I just had a meeting with the two ADs and their secretaries, is we do, we will have to have some conversation around finances for athletics because if we're at 20% capacity, especially with football, we're looking at tens of thousands of dollars of of shortfall in revenue. So we'll have to talk about what that looks like. We just got the anticipated change in revenue and we've got from the ADs what they've already cut out of their budget down to bare bones, just to try to get out what they could this year. But there's definitely a shortfall, so just kind of as a initial comment there. But we'll definitely, that's something that I'm going to have them come in and and talk probably at our next morning meeting is what we discussed.
Related to extracurriculars, outside of athletics, I know that band, there won't be competitions, but they're having their camp this week to prepare to.
Yes.
Be on the field and play for games.
Yep, the competitions are run through OMEA, the Ohio Music Educators Association. And so they canceled the competitions through through their organization. So that wasn't something that we just pulled out of. It was it was canceled. But we are planning and I don't think it's been solidified. I know that we're at least planning on having marching band at home football games. Kind of up in the air on what's going to happen with travel for marching band and cheerleaders right now. And I know also they're working on just even tickets for, you know, we would love to take all the home tickets when we have a home football game with our fans, but there wouldn't even be enough room with this, with the limited seating for the other players' parents to get in. So then you start looking at the bands and cheerleaders, and we have one of the smaller stadiums. It gets really tricky fast. So I don't think they've made a decision on away games, but I know the the intent right now is to have them at home, at home games.
Is there any plan for drama at the upper levels?
We've, I know we talked about it. I don't think we've made an actual plan other than the conversation was, you know, quite frankly, what I said was, think of it as if that's your kid's passion and the reason they come to school, you would want us to figure out a way to make it happen. I don't know whether we've gotten any farther with that right now because we're focused more on the the big things that are happening right now. But definitely, we've heard from some different districts that have come up with some creative ways to do that. And I know that we're committed to anything that we can make happen within the safety protocols. We want to be able to do that, again, knowing that for some kids, that's their, the reason they go to school, so.
Shakespeare in the park. Let's do it.
Great. Streaming a performance.
Yeah, I mean.
Pay for streaming, right?
Well, we we definitely are committed to, and they may have had some conversations since the last one, but we we basically came up with a big list of every question we'd received or we'd thought of and kind of went through and broke them into categories. I know that was one that we talked about. We want to figure out how to do it. I don't know that we've gotten to it yet, but definitely want to have some conversations around that.
So you guys have been a little busy.
Little bit, little bit. And I know I've mentioned it before, but just really appreciate these these guys out here in the audience and all their work. It's been a crazy, crazy summer and certainly don't have the staff. A lot of people have to be working through all of this, but I would take the the quality people we have over more people any day. So, I mean, I would like more people, but, you know. Just appreciate all their work and our team. Principals, they've been great even before they came back, but definitely have been just really focused on trying to figure all this out.
Yeah, I guess I would just express my personal sentiment related to that. There's there's nothing easy about right now, but I'd say there are ways to do things. there's nothing easy about right now, but I'd say there are ways to do things easier that make it easier on the adults, but maybe aren't the best things for kids. And I guess one of the things that I appreciate is, I see a lot of actions by your staff trying to do the right things for kids, even if it makes it harder for adults. And for me, that's a good barometer of we're making the right choices.
I think the honors conversation that Jen brought up earlier is one of those, you know, we didn't think it's, it's hard to do that, because we don't have staffing, and we really had to move lots of kids that are in-person schedules around, too, to come. I must talk with my hands a lot. I about hit this again. So for us, though, thinking about if somebody chooses at home, and especially when we look at our honors courses at the high school being weighted, I don't think it's fair to a kid to say you don't get that opportunity. So huge kudos to them for figuring that out, because it definitely was a huge puzzle.
Anyone else? Comments or questions? So Jeremy, I think we're good to call the vote on eleven-three.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Item eleven-four, it's recommended the board authorize the superintendent to amend student handbooks and other documents as appropriated based on recommendations from health officials. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Sheri. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Leanna's got a third. Sweet.
Oh, sorry.
No, you're good.
Do you want to speak to this a little bit, and maybe how we came to this thought in terms of putting it up for discussion?
Yes, we were getting ready to post all of our student handbooks on our websites, and Mark and I were talking about how we need to now update and add K two on the mask policy. And just concerned as those things continue to change, and it could be heading in the direction it has, or it could even be, you know, as we get into the spring, now masks aren't required. Just wanting to be able to make those adjustments as we adjust our plans, and not having to bring handbooks back or wait till another meeting three weeks later to bring a handbook back. Obviously, if it's a big situation, other than adjusting, hey, now we have to have K two, something like that, then we would bring it for a discussion anyway. But just trying to be able to keep the handbooks updated to reflect the current orders.
Because there's times where you may have a three-week break or so, short of calling an emergency meeting if something were to change and whatnot.
Yeah, and the other documents, as an example, would be, which you just approved in eleven-point three, that prior to this approval you just made, we just updated it, tag K two.
And the scope here would be limited strictly to health recommendations and health procedures, correct?
Correct.
Thoughts or comments from the board? Go ahead, Jeremy.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Item twelve, schedule the next board meeting. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is a week from today at 6:30 right here in the office. We will be streaming that one as well. If you're following along at home, feel free to join us for that one. Item thirteen's executive sessions, recommended the board enter executive session to consider the employment or appointment of a public employee or official. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Go have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Sheri. When you're ready, Jeremy?
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes. Thank you for joining us online today. We do not anticipate coming out of executive session to take any public action, so thank you very much, and have a great day.